Commissioner Allen.
Present.
Commissioner Kelly.
Present.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Present.
Commissioner Ruppert.
Here.
Commissioner Lanier. I think she's here.
Here.
And Mayor Bliss. Yes. So, good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'm going to make a few announcements before we get started. And the first one is, in follow-up to our last meeting, which we did for the first time, we ran it live on Facebook Live, as well as on our Comcast channel 26. So, tonight's meeting is also live, so I wanted to let all of you know that, and let the public know that, that we appreciated the public comment that we received. We do this for our Committee of the Whole meeting in the morning, and then we also do it for our Planning Commission meeting. So, I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that. Next, I would like to have our chief come up and give us a brief update on the flooding. So, as all of you know, weather here in Michigan is a little tricky. So, we've had warmer weathers and lots of rain, warmer weather and lots of rain, and there's a flood warning. So, I asked our chief to just come, update the full City Commission, but also the community, about where we are with flooding and what we can expect in the days ahead, but also that we are well-prepared. I know there was a meeting earlier, emergency team meeting, in preparation for that. So, Chief, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
If you don't know him, Chief Lehman, our fire chief.
Thank you. And we're about 35 shy of capacity, so, just so you understand.
All right.
All right. So, Mayor and Commissioners, a brief update. We met this afternoon, just prior to that meeting, had a, were involved in a conference call with the National Weather Service. They were able to update us on new projections for flood stage levels and crest, which we were going to experience this weekend. The river's going to reach 20.5 inches at about 7:00 on Saturday evening. So, that is going to be, that's fairly significant, because that's the second-largest crest that we've ever experienced since we've been taking data here in Grand Rapids. And our 2013 flood-stage level was 21.85 inches. We are, we're in good shape, though, right now. Our flood wall protection system that we have in place and our flood plan is something that we've activated, and we are working diligently to make sure that we're hitting all those triggers. We have, we're activated right now up to our current stage of 14-foot, and we know that tomorrow afternoon, we will adjust to about a 21-foot level. So, we'll be pre-activating all those things that it takes to engage our river at 21 feet, and then below. We've worked with the MDOT people and Anland reps. They have pulled all of their sheet piling and removed every piece of equipment for that project that's going on down in the river at the Coffers Dam, and so, all that has been removed. The Budget Office has established codes for us, so that we can track our expenditures, and we have ESD staff that are walking the river two times daily. We will also be using our new drone to be able to give us updates on where we're at and give us better analysis of the river. And 311 is being informed and being able to create those talking points necessary to engage the public. We will be meeting again on Friday to make sure that we have a good plan going into the weekend, and our communications director will be contacting all those that have direct impact and who have flood wall protections devices in place. So, I believe that, right now, we are in a very good position. Our current flood walls are able to withstand levels up to 25-foot, and that's the action that's taken place since the 2013 floods. And so, a very, very good plan is in place right now, and I believe that we're actively working that plan. And I can take any questions if you have them.
Thanks, Chief. So, I have just a question. For people in the community, homeowners, is there anything that we should be doing? I know catch basins, we want to make sure those are cleared out to prevent flooding in streets, but do you have any other recommendations?
Just, I know that at this time, the volume of water that's going to be passing through the Grand Rapids area, 30,000 cubic feet per second, and that's an incredible amount of water, very dangerous to even be down at the river's edge. So, I would just say, you know, just making sure that everybody's aware of staying away from that, making sure that if they do have any issues at all, that they experience anything that they haven't experienced before. There's a lot of people in town that know that they're going to have something happen, because it's based on historical, that they've always had that happen. But, we want to make sure that we're avoiding those areas, and just if there's anything out of the ordinary that happens, we know we're going to be staffing up for higher call volumes as we go into the weekend.
Okay, great. And other recommendations, I know from years past, not just to be safer on the river, try to not get too close, but also not to drive through deep puddles that you can't see.
Standing water and all those areas, below viaducts or anything else, those are definitely areas that we would like everybody to stay away from.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, any other questions?
Thanks, Chief.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Thanks for your work. All right. So, next, that's going to take us to approval of minutes, and before we get to those, I'd like to make two additional comments. So, those of you here tonight for one of the ordinances related to the Chesapeake Project or Viridian Place, I wanted to let you know that Commissioners Jones and Commissioner Kelly notified those of us around this table, other Commissioners and myself, that they will be requesting that that decision be postponed. So, we'll be taking that up and postponing that. We haven't voted yet, but if we have colleagues who represent a ward and they request a postponement, we are often happy to support that. And so, I just want to let you know, if you're here for that, that is what's going to happen. I know we have a full agenda, and that's later on on the agenda, so I wanted to let you know that. And then, secondly, in response to a number of calls that many of us received today and emails that we received, there seemed to be a little bit of a confusion on what we voted on earlier at Committee of the Whole. So, earlier today, when we talked about the zoning ordinance recommendations that came from the Planning Commission, what we voted on this morning was to set a public hearing for those for March 27th in front of this body at 7:00 PM. So, some people called our offices today concerned that we were voting on those tonight. So, I just want to be really clear that if you have the agenda, you can look through the agenda, but we're not voting on those ordinances tonight. We just set the public hearing for March 27th. So, it's five weeks away, and that gives us time to continue to hear from the community, which many of us, I think actually all of us, have heard a lot of feedback already, and will continue to hear feedback. But I just wanted to make sure that if you had any questions about that, or if there was some confusion, that you knew what we were voting on tonight. And if you, I'm not sure we have enough agendas for everyone in this room, so I wanted to make sure that you, if you don't have an agenda, you know what is before us tonight that we'll be voting on. Okay? So, with that, we will go to approval of the minutes, and this is our minutes, these are our minutes from February 20th, or February 6th at 7:00 PM.
So, move. Support.
All right. Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right. Next, that will take us to our first opportunity for public comment tonight. So, if this is your first time at a Commission meeting, and some of you have an agenda, some of you don't, let me just walk you through it. We have multiple opportunities for public comment. The very first opportunity for public comment is if you're here to speak about something that we're actually voting on. So, earlier today, in addition to our Committee of the Whole meeting, we had other standing meetings, Finance or Fiscal Committee, Community Development Appointments, and those items are on our agenda tonight, and we'll be formally voting on those. But then, we also have three public hearings tonight, so later on on the agenda. If you were here to speak about the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant for Roberto Clemente Park, that is a scheduled public hearing, that's a little bit later on on the agenda. We also have a public hearing on the Uptown Business Improvement District Plan. So, if you're here to speak on that, that will be later on on the agenda. And then, also, we have a public hearing on an ordinance rezoning for 3,000 Monroe Avenue for a special district PR planned redevelopment district. Try not to use acronyms. So, again, that's a scheduled public hearing, so when it's time for those, we'll open up the public hearing, we'll provide some initial input and facts about the issue, and then I'll open it up for public comment. And then, at the very end of the meeting, we'll have public comment based on anything else that's on your heart and mind. So, with that, I will open up the first opportunity for public comment tonight, and this is public comment on something that we are voting on tonight. Couple of rules apply. We ask that you share your name, the city that you live in, and you'll be given up to three minutes to speak. We ask that you come up here to this podium and speak into the microphone, so that everyone can hear you. And then, there's a timer right up here that you can keep your eye on, and that will tell you how much time you have left. Okay? All right. So, this first opportunity for public comment is open.
Great. Jim Howes, Grand Rapids, talking about D9, the public hearing for the recommendations. I would like to make the suggestion, you do an individual hearing for each recommendation, because I think giving the residents only three minutes to talk about all four of the zoning ordinances isn't going to be enough time, as we saw from the Planning Commission video, that everyone was getting cut off, because there wasn't enough time for them to express what they wanted to say and have heard. Because, the last thing I want, from being an affordable housing advocate with you guys, is for you to pass a policy that hasn't had proper community engagement. So, that's what I'm afraid is going to happen with these policies, and by scheduling the public hearing and not having everything up to date, for example, the city's new website, the Housing Now packet information still has the original recommendations to the zoning board, not the recommendations the public hearing is going to be about. So, there's no way for me to even communicate out to our people. These are the changes, the much-worse changes that they are making or recommending, or better, play both sides of the coin. So, that's important. And then, the thing I want to make sure is very clear, is what I heard this morning discussed was, these recommendations are coming out of the Housing Advisory Committee, which came out of the Great Housing Strategy, and it wasn't an Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, and that we need all types of housing in our city. And as much as I could agree with, we need all types of housing in our city, I'd like to read to you what Greg Sanstrom wrote for the Housing Now policies, that city staff assembled a package of legislative actions to address affordable housing issues. These transformative actions will allow the community to create an environment that helps nonprofit and for-profit housing developers address the urgent housing affordability and quality issues. So, we're not talking about housing of all types, when we're talking about these recommendations. These recommendations are to create affordable housing in our city, and we already had to change the language in the NEZ to make it, so we're saying housing affordability, because that one no longer qualified by the time they made it all the way through. I don't want the same to happen with these zoning ones. I don't want us to go back and say, "Oh, well, it's created more housing, and we have an amazing housing shortage." Because, to my knowledge, the fancy three-bedroom apartments on Bond still have open spots, but there's a long wait list for any affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Howes. That's important feedback. And as soon as, after today's meeting and we vote, since you, it sounds like you watched Committee of the Whole this morning, we weren't, we had some debate about whether we would be moving forward the recommendations as presented and recommended, recommended from the Planning Commission or not. So, after we vote tonight and it's official, we'll get moving tomorrow to make sure that we have good communication and information out for the public, to know what the public hearing is on. Thank you.
Good evening. Lynn Robeau, I live in the city of Grand Rapids, and I want to thank you all. I want to thank you all for asking such good questions this afternoon, or this morning during your meeting. You ask questions about statistics, and it's something we've been looking for, for a very long time, and haven't been able to get, but now that you've asked, you'll get them. So, we appreciate that and look forward to hearing about it. We, I also want to thank you for acknowledging that this is a really difficult issue. It's a very complex issue. I want to also thank you for understanding that citizens need to be heard, and that the citizens are confused, because the Planning Commission really changed up the game. They were confused to begin with, or even more now. So, it is going to take us some time to get the proper word out and onto websites, so I appreciate that. I also appreciate those of you who understand that there are times that your Planning Commission is an advisory board, not a decision-making board, and that it's your decision that makes the difference. They're not as educated as your staff, and while you have someone representing the Planning Commission at your public hearing, I think any questions that are asked of them as to why they picked differing things than your staff, I think your staff should have to answer those same questions, so we get both sides of the story. I also want to thank you for acknowledging that the, that the special land use process is costly, and it's time-consuming, and for developers that are truly going to help us get low-income or low, or affordable housing in the city, there are things you can do with your policy to make that much easier for them. But for everybody else who's a for-profit developer, I'm not sure that those same rules should apply, and I'm sure that there's a way that you can make that happen. I also want to thank you for setting the public hearing for March 27th. I think that it's really important for people to be able to talk and be heard. But if you really, really want affordable housing to be put into effect immediately, please talk to your developer friends who have been land-banking housing since you started this process four years ago, especially in the south and the north ends of town. They have bought up these houses, they boarded them up, and neighbors are living with the crap, that it looks like. And so, they could put those houses back in to stock in use right now. So, talk to them, see what you can do there. We all want the same thing. I think that's the hard thing to understand about all this. We all want the same thing. We just don't want you to do it to us, we want you to do it with us. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I am going to step in here and ask you, please, not to clap. So, if you, I know, let me tell you why, there's good reason why. So, there are rules on the front of your agenda, and we really ask you to do that. I'll give you, we'll try to get more, but I'll tell you what they are. So, I just want to explain, it's really out of just being respectful for people who may have different opinions. So, we want to be a safe place for everyone, and we know that people have very different opinions, and we want to respect that. So, we don't want to intimidate somebody who may come up with a different opinion or a different comment, so we just really want to be a safe place for public comment. So, I'm going to ask you to please be mindful and respectful of these rules. We really want to hear from everyone. We know this is a critical issue, we really do. And we, Commissioner Robeau, you can tell why she was a Commissioner. So, first off, thank you for coming, but, you know, really, we want the same thing. We want a great place, and we want people to be able to afford to live in the city. And so, we have to remember what brings us together. So, we also want to be mindful that not everyone thinks, or thinks like us, or, and a lot of people actually have a different opinion. And we want this to be a safe place for everybody. So, thank you. Even if you disagree and you really want to clap, please hold on to it until you leave these walls. Thank you. All right. Others who wish to be heard? And these are on items that we're voting on tonight. So, if you can tell us what the item is, share your name and the city you live in, that would be great.
Good evening, fellow citizens, esteemed Rapidudes and Rapidows. This is the House of the People, Wasserman Miller reporting. Welcome to Simon and the Grease Square, where black bus routes are still banned and buried beneath the wealthy viaducts.
Ms. Miller, you speak.
This is a comic book. Comic book. No dollar figures. Again, on nine, B124, nine, C14567, and D8. What is this, North Korea? And you have a conflict of interest on A1, Bukowski should get appointed by the County Board. You know, that's double, conflict of interest, and you're trying to apparently engineer him onto the Rapid Board, also. On seven, C7, will the sidewalks be plowed? Going to see nine and 10, who are these tax dodgers demanding taxes exemptions? Are they veterans with honorable discharges? Are they even US citizens? D1, now, this one really gets my Irish show, Ionia. I'll be taking a good stiff walk, as a good Irishman, a good stiff walk up stocking, but Ionia has a bus street, a vital bus street, the 13 runs, and also, I think, the 20, at least for a while. Why kick off our bus riders? They shouldn't be buried anyway down in the wealthy district, but they are right now. Too wealthy. Well, the same deal there. And D1, 2, and 10, we need a booze tax to cover the extra police burden on these all-day drunk fasts. We lack adequate police staffing. We only have 300 officers here. That's only one officer for every 700 residents. Detroit, 2,000 officers, have one officer for every 340 residents. Chicago, if there's still 13,000 policemen, officers have one officer for every 200 citizens. We're under police for all this extra burden. We don't need this stuff. And so, those numbers are, Chicago has three and a half times as many per capita officers on the street, and as you do. And Detroit is about over twice as many. One officer for every 700 residents. And I think it's four, Rosa Parks Circle, let's respect Campow Square. He was a war, 1812 veteran. Rosa Parks had her tour life in Detroit, the one for veterans like Rosa, like Louis Campow, who fought in the War of 1812 and saved Detroit for the Union. G5, why do we need this appointment? Why isn't Carol Wood still?
You're three times a Mr. Miller. Thank you.
Very much.
Appreciate it. All right. Others who wish to be heard?
You got to love democracy.
We do.
My name is Joe Dooley. I live at 1407 Franklin, and two and a half years ago, I had the opportunity to decide where to live in this city. I could have lived downtown, I could live on the northeast side, I could live on the west side, I could live over in east town. And I chose Franklin. And the reason I chose it was because of its flavor. Neighborhoods have flavor. I think we need to acknowledge, and I'm going towards your vote on this, this hearing.
Is that the public hearing? Okay. Thank you.
I'm glad you said that.
Thank you, Mr. Dooley.
I think we need to acknowledge, if we haven't already, that we have a housing crisis in Grand Rapids. Affordable housing crisis. We are no different than San Francisco, we are no different than Austin, Texas, we are no different than Portland, Oregon. And I think we have to acknowledge that. I also think we have to come up with a definition for affordable housing, because my guess is, is if I were to ask each of you, which I'm not going to tonight, because I'm down to 151, we would have a different definition from each of you, what it is. Is it senior housing? Is it college housing, student housing? Is it low-income housing? Is it young family housing? And I think you, as a Commission, have to come to a consensus on that. This 500-foot arbitrary circle, because that's what it is, I think is a punt. And I think it's a punt, because I think we have a very difficult issue. Because if we adopt this by right, and as an attorney by day, I can tell you, you're going to have a floodgate of clients of mine who are going to come in, and they're going to abuse this. You will lose the complexion of neighborhoods, you will lose the diversity of neighborhoods, you will lose the design of neighborhoods, and you will lose the flavor. If there's one thing we're good at in Grand Rapids, it's creativity, and we have shown that over and over again. So, I recommend that you, first of all, create this March 27th hearing, and I ask that you do something else. You create a new group. I looked at the stakeholders. You need to create a new group to make these decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your input. All right. Others who wish to be heard? Okay. Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the opportunity for public comment, and we'll move to petitions and communications.
Our first communication is received from Tina Demling, resigning from the Board of Zoning Appeals.
That is referred to the Committee on Appointments.
We have a communication received from Paul Greenwald, expressing opposition to the proposed Housing Now initiatives.
That is received and filed.
Our third communication is received from Mary Johnson, expressing concerns for the proposed zoning tax changes.
That is received and filed.
Our fourth communication was received from Jack and Mary Castlin, expressing opposition to the development of additional apartment complexes in their area.
And that is received and filed.
And our final communication is received from Midtown Neighborhood Association, expressing the belief that the Housing Now zoning change should be revisited during the master planning process.
And that is also received and filed. All right. Next, that will take us to reports of city officers, and we have two of those tonight.
The Comptroller's report for the period of January 31st, 2018, through February 13th, 2018, in the amount of $18,478,247.33.
And that is received and filed.
Vayner Treasurer's report for the period of January 30th, 2018, through February 9th, 2018.
And that is also received and filed. All right. Next, that will take us to our consent agenda, and on our consent agenda are items that we voted on earlier in one of our meetings, and where the vote was unanimous. So, with one voice vote tonight, we will adopt those items. So, can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
Move.
Support. All right. Commissioners, any comments or questions about our consent agenda, or any item on it? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right. Next, that will take us to our ordinances to be adopted, and we have four ordinances tonight. So, the first one is an ordinance amending Section 1 of the Budget Ordinance 201736 for fiscal year 2018, Amendment Number 14.
So, move. Support.
All right. Commissioner Allen, you want to tell us about this?
Yeah, we had two items on our budget amendment this morning, both fairly minor, but receipt of grants, so that's always a good thing. One was a highway safety overtime reimbursement grant, and the other is an auto theft prevention grant from AAA. So, there was no change to our contingent balance, and I think, if memory serves me correct, and looking back at prior records, we're sitting in as good a position we've been on our contingent balance with four months left in the budget that I've seen in quite a while. So, we still have $842,000 in our contingent balance, so we're doing quite well with that.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right. And this is a roll call vote tonight. Commissioner Allen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Yes.
Commissioner Ruppert.
Yes.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes. And can I get a motion to give this immediate effect?
So, move.
Support.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right. Next, that will take us to our second ordinance tonight, and this is an ordinance rezoning 339, 345, 349, and 353 Franklin Street Southwest, along with 644, 648, 656, 662, 666. That's a lot of them. 710, 730 of Granville Avenue Southwest, along with 328, 332, 336, 340, 344, 346, Graham Street Southwest, and 319, 327, 332, and 334, Ramsey Street Southwest. SDPRD. I should have just said Plaza Roosevelt. But I think I probably have to read it into record. So, this is to rezone this amazing project that so many people refer to as Plaza Roosevelt.
So, move.
Support.
All right. Commissioner O'Connor, you want to tell us about this?
Yeah, thank you. Habitat for Humanity, in partnership with Dwelling Place, Grand Rapids Public Schools, Mercy Health Clinic of Santa Maria, is requesting the PRD rezoning to facilitate the development that, when complete, will contain a new school, commercial space, plaza space, a health center with a drive-through pharmacy, and 66 dwelling units of various residential types. Dwelling Place intends to submit their portion of the project for low-income housing tax credit funding in April 2018.
Yeah. Thank you. Commissioners, questions, comments? Commissioner?
Yes.
Thumbs up.
Congratulations. Congratulations. This has been an amazing process, that where a really deep dive was done with the community, and we're really pleased to be able to move this forward tonight. So, congratulations, those of you who worked on it. I see Lynn, hey, you're in the audience. Congratulations to you and all of the residents who worked so hard on this project.
Yeah. Is Bree here from Hampton?
Ivor is.
Oh, there she is. Way in the back. Bree, thank you for your work on this.
Yes.
Along with everyone.
Ivor.
All right.
Ivy.
All right, any, we did. Any other questions, comments? All right, this is also a roll call vote tonight. Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Repart?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
And Mayor Bliss?
Yes.
All right, one step closer. All right, next that will take us to our third ordinance tonight, and this is the rezoning of 843 Maryland Avenue Northeast and 2128 and 2129 Chesapeake Drive Northeast to SDPRD.
So move, support.
That's okay, you can now make the motion.
So, Mayor, I would like, and Commission, I would like to amend this or move to postpone the ordinance rezoning of 843 Maryland Avenue Northeast and 2128 and 2129 Chesapeake Drive Northeast to the Special District Planned Redevelopment District. And the reason for that is that we heard from, pardon me?
Support.
Okay, thank you.
So a motion to postpone and support. And Commissioner, you want to share why you are making this motion?
Well, for those of you who weren't here on the 6th of February, we had a number of residents from that neighborhood, from the area around the Veridian Place project, come to us and ask lots and lots of questions and had concerns about that. So Commissioner Jones and I had a discussion with that and are working to put together some answers to those questions. And one of the requests from the neighborhood was to go back out and have another neighborhood meeting. So at this point, we do know that NICA is helping to put this together, the Neighborhood Association. On March 14, we don't have a venue lined up yet, but you will get notice. They are going to give us a map of the neighborhood so that we can actually mail postcards, but anyone here tonight that is from that area, you can certainly pass the word on that. As soon as they get a venue identified, we can let those of you who have emailed us know, and I'm sure you can also reach out to the Neighborhood Association, and they will make sure to notify residents. So we will be able to continue answering questions about that development, and hear again from residents.
Commissioner Jones, anything you want to add?
No, just appreciate the fact that we can take more time to hear from the residents and looking forward to the meeting. I think that ultimately, it's really about trying to get to a place where we could find some coming ground, and want to also recognize the work of the Neighborhood Association, the neighbors, and the developer, again, to get to this point where there's ongoing dialogue, so.
Thank you. So commissioners, just to be clear, the motion is to postpone. It does not set a date for having it come back before us, and so we will take the lead from our colleagues in the Second Ward and get a follow-up after the meeting on the 14th.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so the motion to postpone, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next that will take us to our fourth ordinance tonight, and this is an ordinance rezoning 60650 Burton Street Southeast to an SDPRD.
So move.
Support.
Support.
All right, Commissioner Lanier, you want to tell us about this?
Absolutely. So currently, it's a TNLDR, which is a traditional neighborhood low-density residential property, and so this zone change would allow for Samaritas to have a 50 affordable independent living housing units for seniors and persons with disabilities. And it's on the campus where the St. Joseph's Seminary Building is located, where the former Catholic Diocese was located on Burton Street, and formerly Lighthouse Ministries was also in a school that was also there, just to kind of give people an idea of exactly what we're talking about. And, you know, we're excited to have, and the community was also excited to have, the affordable housing units for seniors and those with disabilities.
That's great. All right, commissioners, questions, comments? Commissioner Allen, and then Commissioner Repart?
It's just important, make sure we're crystal clear on that, this is not the recovery development that we receive so much opposition from. This has been supported by the Neighborhood Association and supported by the neighbors.
Thank you for making that decision. Yes, thank you. Commissioner?
And I just want to say that Commissioner O'Connor and I got to meet at least three, maybe four times with Samaritas. They're here tonight. This is an excellent project, a great place for senior housing, and it's, I fully support it, and I think it's going to be a great addition to the First Ward.
And having worked for many years with Samaritas.
It's a great organization.
Really great nonprofit organization, glad to have them here in our community. All right, others? Okay, this is a roll call vote tonight. Commissioner Lanier?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Repart?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes.
All right, commissioners, next that will take us to City Commission Resolutions. This isn't really a resolution, this is just a discussion that we can have collectively as a body to talk about next steps for our city manager search. So I'd like to open up the discussion, having heard a lot of feedback this past week, a lot of concerns from the community, a lot of feedback about what people appreciated about the process and what we could do better. I'd like to open it up for discussion and make the, I should say, ask you to consider actually ending our contract with GovHR. And so I want to just open that up. Again, we don't have to formally vote because it's not technically a resolution, but I want to just get some feedback, see if all of you agree with that. So what that would entail is ending our current contract with GovHR and then working closely with procurement to determine our next steps with a different firm. And then ultimately, the goal will be to, you know, really reset, set a clean slate, and then also to get the position reposted as quickly as possible. Any questions or comments?
I would support that, Mayor. I feel, I appreciate the work that GovHR did during the last cycle, but as we came to the decision point at our last meeting to redo the search, it just feels important that we take the time to do our diligence in terms of making sure that we move forward with the most proactive and positive way that we can. So I think we just, we need to take some time and reimagine how that looks and who we might work with and open that process back up as well.
Okay. So even though it's not a vote, maybe I should call a question. And so maybe I can ask for a motion. Although, Commissioner Allen, did you have an additional comment?
Go ahead.
Let's go ahead and just, it's a little more formal than I know we need to be, but can I ask for a motion to end our contract and pursue working with a different firm?
So moved.
Support.
All right, so any additional thoughts and comments on that, Commissioner Allen?
Well, I would like to actually quote you in your State of the City address. I think this is an incredibly important position, and we need to take the time to do it right. And there was feedback that I received from every possible sector of the city, every possible group and business individual that really wasn't happy with the process. So, you know, it's important that we continue to work together as a team and come up with a process that we all buy into, but that's not the same process because otherwise, you're going to get the same outcome. So I think we're committed to that.
Yeah, thank you. And I want to reiterate our commitment to moving forward, getting this position reposted. We know how critical it is to select a city manager, and as many of you know, a city manager not only oversees $450 million organization, but also is responsible for over 1,500 employees. So it's an incredibly important position, and we want to find the absolute best person to serve. Commissioner?
Mayor, I think it's important to, and this is a great opportunity, to share the costs that were associated with our contract with GovHR, so that the community can be aware of how much we spent, and knowing that it is an important decision and that we don't take it lightly, and that there will be additional expenses associated with consulting with another firm, I think we need to talk about that. I think the other thing is really trying to address the process and for this body to speak candidly about the things that we didn't necessarily like about the previous process, so that we can avoid having those things repeat themselves in an upcoming process. And I think that, you know, once we have another firm in place, we'll probably be able to talk about that more intelligently as they make recommendations about what the process will look like. But personally, I'd like to just say, I felt repeatedly as though everything was rushed, and I don't want that experience for myself and not for the community as well, because there were a number of people who shared that they didn't feel as though they had an opportunity to weigh in, things were shared last minute, we know that the video didn't work. And so, you know, I want us to be mindful of, as we go through whatever the new process is, to be mindful of making sure that we are methodical in our process, so that we aren't making errors as we're trying to make what I think is probably one of the most significant decisions that we'll make as a commission.
Yeah, thank you for that, Commissioner. And I think it is a little premature to say what the new process will look like until we have a firm that we're working with, and then we can lay that out. But I think everyone has, I should say, parts of the process they appreciated and parts that they didn't. And so as we move forward, we'll be extremely proactive about the process and also making sure that it's really clear ahead of time what it is and the timeline and the dates and what that looks like. So that will be a piece of it. In response to cost, with both the contract, and Mayor Beth, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but with both the contracts we had with GovHR and the funds allocated for travel, we had roughly $52,000 allocated to take care of both. We may still have a few bills that come in related to travel, but we have spent roughly $32,000, so we didn't spend the full amount that was allocated. And so we'll have $20,000 still available for that, but this will, we will accrue additional costs as we look to hire a different firm. And we're not sure what those are just yet, but I would guess that would probably be something similar. But I think it's good that we came in under what we had anticipated.
Yes.
All right, any other final comments, questions? Commissioner?
Just that I feel good about this decision, just given the feedback we heard from the community, I think that we are, you know, pushing pause, and again, for all the reasons that you all cited and you did in your State of the City address, that this is such an important decision. But the feedback that I've gotten have been pretty much 100%, let's push pause, this is a good choice to make, so we want to honor that from the community.
Thank you. All right, with that, I'll just do a voice call vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Okay, so next, that will take us to our scheduled public hearings tonight, and we have three of those, and we will start with the very first one. And this is a public hearing for an application to the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund for a grant related to Roberto Clemente Park. And we'll start this public hearing with our, oh, David, you're right in the front, our Parks Director, to tell us about this project. This is, as many of you know, MDNR trust fund dollars are available through the state to help with park projects, and we've applied for a number of them in the past, and we have to go through a process around this table in order to apply for those funds. And tonight is one of the steps in that process.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good morning, good morning, nice morning.
It's been a long day.
Mayor and commissioners, it's been a long day indeed. David Markworth, Director of Grand Rapids Parks and Recreation. As the mayor pointed out, the Department of Parks and Recreation is seeking a trust fund grant with the Michigan Department of Natural Resources for $300,000 to support a nearly $1.5 million park improvement project at Roberto Clemente Park in Ward 1. This is an important project, one that not only looks at park improvements, but looks at integrating green infrastructure and stormwater improvements into this park project as well. So I think it's important to note along those lines that of that $1.5 million project, nearly $900,000 of that project fund is coming from our stormwater infrastructure group in the city of Grand Rapids. So this is an important project, one that we're looking forward to. This is a 25% match that the city is required to match toward the $300,000 grant, and this would then come out for some more public input and public participation in process in terms of what people would like to see this park look like once we get through this public hearing process here tonight. So with that, if there are any questions, I'll let you open it up for public comment.
All right, commissioners, any questions before we hear from the public? All right, thank you. All right, so if you're here to be heard on this public hearing, now is an opportunity to come forward. Same rules apply. We ask that you share your name, the city that you live in, and we'll give you up to three minutes to speak.
Good evening, commissioners, and Mayor Bliss. My name is Amy Brower. I'm a resident of Grand Rapids, but I'm here tonight, and my role is the Director of the Roosevelt Park Neighborhood Association, the neighborhood that Roberto Clemente Park is in. And I'm just here to express the Neighborhood Association's support of this grant application. And just wanted to express that Clemente Park is a wonderful resource for our neighborhoods, very important to our residents' well-being. These improvements to Clemente Park would really help to increase the attractiveness and the safety of the park, making it a more accessible resource for Roosevelt Park neighbors of all ages. Our neighborhood's unique in the sense that we have a very high concentration of youth. Nearly half of our residents are 19 or younger, according to the 2010 census data, so making improvements to the park that could offer recreational activities that promote healthy and active lifestyles would be a really strong investment in the future of those youth. In addition, one of our neighborhood schools, Southwest Community Campus, is located adjacent to the park. There's over 800 students at that school that can take advantage of the natural spaces there in the park. The proposed improvements, and we actually would be very excited to remain involved in the community engagement process of what exactly those improvements and additions would entail, but the enhancements to the green space are very much in line with our area-specific plan that was just recently passed as well. So I would just hope that we could count on your support tonight for this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, others who wish to be heard related to this project and this application?
Good afternoon. I am Pastor Idella Williams, for Family United for Justice and Equality, and I live in the Boston Square area. My comment is, our streets are horrible, potholes.
Mayor?
Oh, sure, yeah. So Pastor Williams, can you speak in that, but also, is this about Clemente Park and the MDNR trust fund grant?
Oh, I thought this was public.
We're not there just yet, I'm sorry. So this is?
Well, the, the.
So this is for the?
The park on the west side?
It, yes, Clemente Park.
Right, that's the one I spoke on last year, and nothing was done.
We're working on it, that's why we're trying to get money from the state.
Okay.
Yeah. So are you in support of it?
Yes.
Okay, all right, just check in, just check in. Thank you, thank you. All right, others who wish to be heard on the MDNR trust fund?
Good evening, Commissioner, Mayor, good evening. My name is Ricardo, I'm a Caribbean artist based in Grand Rapids. I have a wonderful opportunity to develop a few different things pointing to art and culture. I have the opportunity also to develop the Caribbean Coalition, the Caribbean Art Festival for three years in Grand Rapids, and the first Latin American Art Festival in Grand Rapids. So I've been blessed to be in a place that I feel that I belong. So talking about the Roberto Clemente Park, I think is a wonderful opportunity for our community to keep working and developing a lot of activity that happened since 1985, if I don't get wrong. I have a conversation with a few of them who actually have dominoes, baseball games, and all of these different activities who represent the Caribbean community in Grand Rapids. So I think it's really important, and I just raise my voice, I'm one of the Caribbean community in Grand Rapids. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right, others who wish to be heard on this request? John, are you coming up to speak or no? Okay. All right, I am going to go ahead then and close this public comment period, and this is referred back to the Community Development Committee. All right, that will take us to our next public hearing tonight, and this is a public hearing on the Uptown Business Improvement District Plan. So notification of this public hearing has been made to all of those in the district and pursuant to state law. I will have Shama come up to get us started.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. So this is a request, well, actually, today is a public hearing on the Uptown Business Improvement Districts renewal for fiscal year 2019 in their business improvement, well, review of their business improvement plan, which is the next step in actually getting, renewing it for this six one-year term. The first five years have been successful and have produced valuable results for the Uptown corridor, and so the bid would wish to continue on with that progress. For the fiscal year 2019, the current special assessment that's in place right now is going to remain in place and will continue on the same as this year. And basically, the next step is going to be a declaration of a necessity, which we'll hopefully look into next month, May 6. But again, this was approved by the Uptown Bid Board, it was reviewed and recommended for approval at their January 3 meeting, and it was presented to the Economic Development Project Team on January 9. And again, this is a public hearing on the actual plan, on what they plan on doing for the next fiscal year. So if there are any specific... So if there are any specific questions to this, I can answer those questions. I think there may be some people from the Uptown corridor that are here as well.
I see them in the audience. So I, let me see if any Commissioners have questions, and then, I see Christine and Lynn, if you want to add anything before I open up for a public comment, you're welcome to do that. Commissioners, I know Commissioner Jones recently came off Uptown, and Commissioner Allen joined Uptown, so do either of you have anything to add?
No ma'am.
No? Okay. Christine, Lynn, either of you want to, come on up if you want to add anything, and then we'll open up for public comment.
Hi, I'm Lynn, I own East Town Veterinary Clinic, and I am the Uptown Bid Chair, and I'm just going to give you kind of some stats on the success of our collaboration. Commercial property values are increasing in our corridor, and a lot of the hard work that we've put in over the years, we're definitely seeing a payoff for a lot of that, all of that volunteer work. Current commercial vacancy rate is around 5% to 6%. There are 320 businesses, including second-story office spaces in Uptown. We've had 26 new businesses that have opened or moved into Uptown just in 2017. Five businesses have expanded or are opening additional locations, and two businesses have opened secondary locations outside of the Uptown District. There have been rising property values in new development and high occupancy in the surrounding neighborhoods. There are 30 individual business owners and residents that actively participate in the bid and CID boards as well, or the committees, to make sure that all the money that we're bringing in is spent responsibly. We also employ a part-time corridor manager, as well as two to four additional contract employees for various projects throughout the year. So those things that us volunteer business and residents can't do in our free time. So Uptown is in the process of creating a nonprofit called Uptown Grand Rapids that will support the CID and bid structure and work to collaborate with the participating neighborhood and business associations. It's going to operate similarly to DGRI, so that we can bring together a lot of people to plan for continuous community improvement using a variety of resources. The Design Committee completed a mobility plan that includes strategies for walkability, bicycling, transit riding. We're going to use special assessment funds to help deploy these strategies in cooperation with the city, so the new stopping at crosswalks is extremely exciting to us. Let's see, there's lots of people that we work together with. Talk about that, bike racks, bike repair stations, benches, enhanced shelters at bus shops, parking maps, and really working with a variety of organizations to make that happen, so it's comprehensive. The Marketing Committee is creating a long-term plan for promoting Uptown businesses to both in-town, so residents, what services are near me that I can get to easily, and then visitors, so how can we bring those people that are visiting Grand Rapids into Uptown to visit our stores and shops. The Business Development Committee provides frequent opportunities for Uptown business owners and their employees to network and to learn from each other, which has been amazing. And we want to make sure also through that feedback of participants if our strategies are working, so we actively solicit feedback, what do you need and how can we do it better. In order to continue to do this work, we're going, we are requesting a renewal of the special assessment for fiscal 2019, and it's going to be the same as it has been for the past two years, which is $5.46 per linear foot for commercial, industrial, and government-owned properties, and then voluntary assessment of $2.73 for nonprofit-owned businesses. This assessment includes 331 properties, bringing the total revenue to 119,000, in addition to the expected 60,000 from the tax increment financing. So we've done a lot of stuff, and it's going really well, just in general. When I first started, we had about $3,000 in tax increment financing, and now we have about 60, and it's super cool that we can turn around and invest it right back into our local neighborhood.
Yeah, I think it was three when I was on the board.
Yeah. So that's quite an improvement, so we're really excited to be able to make such big impact in our local business and community.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Questions, Commissioners? All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much, thanks for being here. So I will officially open up this public comment period, so if you are here tonight to speak about the Uptown Business Improvement District Plan, you are welcome to come forward. Again, same rules apply, we ask that you share your name, the city that you live in, and you'll be given up to three minutes to speak.
This is, remains a discriminatory hypocritical process, the last speaker was allowed to go on and on, and then are cut off, which violates 40th Amendment, the Alarson Act, and so on, and maybe our state constitution, but you are in our face being hypocritical, I love the applause back there, and you cut it off, you know? Ellen James was, her record was disgraceful, also the last city clerk, who doubled your salaries basically by cutting off the local, giving only two days' notice in the local being, it probably never happened when Commissioner Robert was around. Anyway, we're on Uptown, the two of the three, the Speaker mentioned getting people over to Uptown, but two of the three bus routes don't come down to our hotels, okay? Including your nun-bachelor 14. Your Communications Director slapped a recommendation on the nun-bachelors of 14 to get it downtown, marching north and south Monroe, up and down, up at East Paddle Hill, and nothing happened. You didn't even put it in the, at least put it in RTA agenda, introducing it as a resolution. So shelters were also mentioned, the shelters are a disaster, every single smoker's hut in town is better. I mean, we've got two Bukowski gaps, who leads the wheelchair lobby. One gap is fine for wheelchair, but not two, okay? The rapid bill, $7,000 to put up one shelter, which is just another ridiculous figure out of them, no accountability. The benches are hard metal, so we're frozen in the wintertime, and boiled in the wintertime. We used to have wooden benches until Bukowski got involved on it. So on shelters, the shelters also leak, you know, and sometimes I'll stay behind the shelter, they're always facing the wrong direction, okay? We've got nasty western winds and northerly winds, the shelters, you put them up, they're facing to the north. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Miller. All right, others who wish to be heard on the Uptown Business Improvement District Plan? So if you're here to speak on the Uptown Plan?
Hello, my name is Martha Cooper, Grand Rapids, Michigan. I used to live in the Uptown area back in the early 80s, and I'm an, I've been an entrepreneur, and I love the idea of people going into business for themselves. It's been very exciting in some ways to see what's going on in the Uptown area and all of these cool city businesses going in, but I want to also, I also hear that, you know, I almost can barely keep track of all the money stuff. But we're going to be investing in some businesses, and I get that. But, you know, I will tell you that when I drive down wealthy now, back in the 83, it's all white people now. All right? So I'm going to tell you that although that sounds really exciting, and it all looks good in Grand Rapids, where did those people go? Where did they go? And when all of those property taxes were going up and up and up, because everyone there was selling their house for twice as much as they bought it? It was raising the property taxes of the people that had owned a home there, to the point where they could no longer own that home. Perhaps it went to the land bank. And none of that is ever coming back to the community, not to the people that don't live there anymore. I'm here to speak about the people that don't live there anymore. I lived on Charles Street with my son. I didn't have a car, I was going to college hoping for better, for my son, for me. I became very attached to the people in my community, I don't see much difference. The difference is, is that this town is handing money to the people that don't need it. And that's all I'm going to say about the Uptown District. I'm very happy for this city, but I'm scared for some people. It's not black anymore.
Thank you, Martha. All right, others who wish to be heard? All right, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close this public comment period, and this will be referred back, oh, are there people? Are you coming up? Okay. Sorry about that, I didn't see you. Oh, that, take your time, you're fine.
I'd like to speak on behalf of Grand Rapids. We have supplied Grand Rapids with thousands and thousands of dollars through Magic Johnson, Detroit Tigers, the Detroit basketball team.
Sir, I'm, I'm sorry, is this...
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Okay, I'm sorry. We're just asking for Alexander School. We'd like to get the key to Alexander School, we supplied millions of dollars.
And can you share with us your name, sir?
My name?
Yes.
Black Diamond. Okay, so that's my nickname, Michael By.
Okay. And is this related specifically to Uptown, to the business plan?
I'm sorry.
Is, are your comments related to the Uptown Business Plan?
It's hard for me to understand in my age.
Oh, that's okay.
But I'm simply just asking for a place that we can keep doing the wonderful work we're doing. My daughter's Executive Director at Danville University, we have an African school, our bishop has 13 million members, and we're supplying Grand Rapids with millions and millions of dollars. So divorcees in the family, Culver, C-U-L-B-R, got those hotels and hamburgers, I'm out of time, God bless.
Sir, I want to meet you...
We're asking for the key to Alexander School, they promised us the key that we could get in the building.
So for...
And keep up the good work we're doing.
To do youth programming, is that what you're talking about?
Baby birth?
All right, to do youth programming?
I'm sorry.
Maybe I'll have, you know, Asante.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, that's okay, Black Diamond, did I get that right?
Yeah, I'm going through stress.
Okay, that's okay, you know, we all have stress sometimes.
Old age, 84 years old.
That's okay. We're glad to have you here. You know what, I'm going to have Asante in the back, he's raising his hand right now. If you can connect with him, and then maybe he can, he can take down some, some contact information, and maybe even find out who we can follow up at JRPS with you.
Thank you.
Okay? Okay, thank you. All right, so last opportunity, if you're here to speak about the Uptown, Uptown Business Improvement Plan, now is the time to come for, now is the time to come forward? All right, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close that public comment period, and that will be referred to Committee of the Whole, and that will take us to our third public comment, or I'm sorry, public hearing tonight. And this is a public hearing on an ordinance rezoning 3000 Monroe, South Monroe Avenue Northwest to SDPRD, which is a special district plan redevelopment district. All right, so we're going to start this public hearing with Suzanne Schultz, and she will give us an overview of this project. We'll allow Commissioners to ask any questions that they may have, and then we'll open it up for public comment.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This is development for the Veterans Facility, it's approximately a 15-acre site northeast of Monroe and Three Mile, it's actually up on the screen, so people can see the location of the property. The site's currently wooded with slopes downward as the site approaches the river, so there's about a 30-foot grade change from the east end to the west end. It's generally divided into two sections due to grade the proposed development is, each with a north-south retaining wall. This facility would provide skilled nursing facilities for up to 128 residents. It consists of, here, I'll bring the picture up. Trying to make the touchscreen work, and it's a little bit touchy, tricky. So it consists of four housing unit sections, and then in the center is a two-story community center. The plan, we had some questions earlier today from some constituents, they wanted to know about the rezoning request, and so the request today is for a planned redevelopment district, which would approve this project with the site plan as presented, so it's not just the rezoning request to a different zone district, it also includes the project approval for the, for the site. 128 parking spaces are required as part of the zoning, 137 parking spaces are provided. As I mentioned, the community center is a two-story building located in the center, it's where the grades will meet, so you have about 15 feet of fall from the east to the west with the community center in the middle, and then another drop, and then it'll go out to a retaining wall along Monroe Avenue. The neighborhood residential buildings are single-story buildings that will be clad in fiber cement and brick siding, with architectural shingle roofing and some standing seam metal roofing as accents. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on January 25, 2018, and in addition, the developer had a neighborhood outreach meeting on November 27 at Middle, at the Riverside Middle School. Several neighbors did speak in concern, talking about the development, particularly about the loss of trees on the site and proposed grading, but we did not have really anybody, we had a couple of comments, but really after the neighborhood meeting was expressed, the developer did additional analysis with site grading and landscaping and softening of the retaining walls, as well as tree preservation in the center of the site near where the turnaround is located, to try to preserve as many trees as possible, as well as to maintain the tree canopy along the edges along Three Mile, to buffer the residential development across, or the residential homes across the street. So today is the public hearing, and then at your next meeting, then you would make your decision.
So Commissioners, any questions for Suzanne?
Suzanne, can you talk a little bit, and I don't know if you're the most appropriate person to do this or not, I've had questions about the other facilities, will they stay fully operational, is there anyone that's going to be displaced? Or can you just talk a little bit about kind of overall services on the site?
It's my understanding that no one will be displaced by this, that they have done a thorough analysis of the residents who are there, and the plan is to move the residents into this facility and evaluate repurposing the existing site. So there's no demolition plans, they're going through a master planning effort to look at the balance of the property and the other sites, but this is really to provide a different, more residential feel than an institutional feel, which is currently the case in the existing Veterans Facility, where they have, this would have individual rooms for the, for the veterans, and the different facilities all on one level, so that there aren't the different levels and room sharing going on.
Good, I'm glad to hear that. And then for the repurposing and, and the plan for the rest of the site, that will happen down the road, is it happening right now, timeline for that?
I, that's, that would be a question for the Veterans Facility. My understanding is that they're still trying to work through that, that they don't have any immediate plans, but they want, they are doing this in phases.
Okay, okay, that's helpful, thank you. Commissioners, any questions, comments?
Just that we did meet with residents in the area at Riverside Middle School and the folks from the Veterans Facility, and people were generally pleased with this, especially because they realized that the veterans will have a better facility and a more modernized kind of care instead of more institutional, so we're excited about that for them. And thank you for the work too on, on the water issues and the grading, that's been remedied.
All right, anything else? Okay, thank you. All right, so this public hearing is now open, so if you are here tonight to speak about this project, you are welcome to come forward again, same rules apply, we ask that you share your name, the city that you live in, and we'll give you up to three minutes to speak. So if you're here specifically about this project, now is your opportunity to come forward.
Mayor, Commissioners, my name's Paul Visas-
Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Paul Visaske, I'm the city. I own the property on the east line of this development. My wife and I have been stewards of this woods for 38 years. And the Riverside meeting that you're talking about, we were never invited to, we never got a notice. But we did get to a meeting not too long ago down at another zoning meeting. If you look at that map, and you look at our residence down in that particular corner of Three Mile, right next to this new property, you can see that, and you go north on our property line, which was a, basically a game preserve for 38 years. And all of the additions that we've put onto this building and every, on our, to our property that has allowed us to enjoy this space and to look both west and north into a pristine environment. You can now see that our bedroom looks right out onto a parking lot. And there will be no, for, we will have no trees, we will have nothing that will separate our property and our residents from that parking lot and from those buildings. And after 38 years of being there with this property, and then all of a sudden wake up one morning and find that we're now going to be exposed to this, is been a very, very difficult thing for us. And we're, we're very, very distressed. We, we've been, we had the pleasure, we're having the pleasure of dealing with Craig Newhouse from Tower Pinkster, who is a landscape architect, to try to do something to create some kind of a screen between ourselves and this property. But you can see that because of the way that the place has, this property has been engineered, where they have taken it all the way to our property line, and we're only seven feet, or eight feet from the property line, our, our structure. And we were given zoning permission to do that when we put this addition in. We're in trouble. Our, our property has gone down, it's going to plummet, all that we've put into this. And so we, we have no way of protecting ourselves, we have no screen, and we don't know what to do.
Thank you.
We're lost.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, Pastor Adella Williams, Family United for Justice and Equality, Grand Rapids, Michigan, on Boston Street. But I was happy to know that the veterans that have fought for us are going to have a better opportunity. I visit there, and I know that they do need some upgrading, because it's been years since it has been, and we did put on a, a performance for it to be rebuilt. And they are elderly, but they, some don't have legs, some can't look out. And when I worked there, it was horrible. And now they're just saying it's going to be an upgrade, and it's going to be different. I applaud that. Now, for the young man that lived there so long, I can understand his frustration as well. But a change has to come somewhere. And if they fought for us, let's give them a little peace, because they are old and passing by. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Williams. All right, others who wish to be heard?
Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Bill Hirsch. I'm a veteran. I'm also a property owner directly across the street from the project. As a veteran, I want the very best for my fellow brothers. As a property owner across the street, I want as good as we can get for my neighbors. And nobody's going to be 100% happy until we see where talk stops and action happens. I can support an awful lot of this plan. And I've got just one little thing that could not cost anybody a whole lot of money, but could help my neighbor Paul to some degree, my neighbor Brian, my next-door neighbor. Brian and I live directly on 320, or Three Mile Road, looking directly into the woods across the street. I'm on the corner of Oakwood, Brian's on the corner of Lafayette. We've both lived in our homes for years and years. One of the things we witness very, very frequently, on Three Mile, there can sometimes be traffic backed up from Coit all the way down towards Monroe, working through the four-way stop. I'm not positive about this, but I believe there are probably three shifts of people that work at the hospital, or the veterans' home. So I envision an awful lot of cars changing shifts. Part of the plan is Oakwood and Lafayette stopped at Three Mile. The plan has roads going in from Lafayette and Oakwood into the veterans' new proposed If, when this is put together, the facility could instruct their employees to enter and exit off of Monroe and off of Coit, which they've been doing for years and years, because that's the only option they had. It would take a lot of strain away from the residents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hirsch, appreciate it.
Mayor, Commissioners, Catherine Buckley, 25 and, Grand Rapids. I'm a veteran, I'm also an advocate for the veterans at the home. My heart goes out for these residents. My personal opinion, the authority who is building this because of their, let's put it blankly, screw-up, they've had to move where they're going to build. So my heart goes out for these neighbors, and I hope someone rectifies that. But my question is, who gets the mailings to come to these meetings?
So, so the mailing, Suzanne, I believe it's 500, 500 feet? I don't want to misspeak.
Okay.
300.
Okay, 300.
Anyone that lives within 300.
All right, that's wonderful. I wonder why none of the veterans at the home were notified? That is their resident.
Yeah.
And they're not all handicapped to the point where they can't be here?
I would think that they would be. Suzanne?
And they should have a voice in what's going on where they live.
Maybe, maybe, so our planning department sends out their notifications, and so maybe that can be something that Suzanne can speak to.
Either that, or they didn't get their mail again. All I know is that you have residents there that have a voice, and they have been shut out of it for years. And not only with the city, but with state and everything, everybody else. And you have, you have representatives here that can vouch for that. And they would have liked to have been here if they would have known about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Catherine, appreciate that input.
Okay, I'm Betty Pike, and I live within the city of Grand Rapids. My husband also lives at the veterans' home, so I have quite an interest there. There are several issues that have been mentioned, oh, that, that nobody's going to be displaced. Well, we have questions about that. We have questions that this is supposedly going to be tied in with the project in Detroit in order to get the federal funding. As far as we know, the grant has not been approved from the VA, nor has property been approved in the Detroit area. So why the rush for here? Yes, the veterans at the home were notified of a meeting at the, where they could review and make comments. Okay, but the meeting was last fall, the notice was posted in the morning that there's a meeting this afternoon. And, and then when people were trying to hurry up and get there before they closed at four, people were packing up at three, three or 3:30. And I will agree with Catherine, the veterans need, at the home need to be aware of what's going on. When I was with my husband during the dinner hour, I was talking to some of the other people, or one, one member especially, he says, yeah, the concept is good, it's a good idea, but not in that spot, and why there? And his other comment was, when do we have a say? So I would encourage to have something there after the flu season. And then they say that what we're, what they're being told and what's happening are seem to be two different things, because one area of the home is completely closed down now. And the members have been moved to other areas. They were told, okay, to save money, and that that's going to be torn down. But if that's going to be torn down, if that's true, then why not modify the drawings? Because I've heard the drawings are only a drawing, and, and put the new facility over there. But so, and nobody's going to be displaced, but between the two homes, 130 people each, and they have approximately 300 people there? Well, the math doesn't work out. So, so that's my comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Pike.
Hi. Nice to finally meet all of you. Catherine Quiers, I'm a veteran advocate, I've been advocating on my own volunteer time for about 50 years now. Basically started with launching the original PTSD awareness program that went national for civilians. It was all military, and it went to civilians. So I have a lot of years testifying and things like that. As a result of that, I was called in by the veterans at the home in 2014 to address concerns and conditions that they had. It actually started, Joey is my cousin, he owns the property that backs up to the home. He was taking care of a very disabled, disfigured veteran. My sister was taking care of him, so she and I went to a meeting at the Coit Clinic to find out how could we help both of them. Long story short, at that meeting, I was approached by a group of veterans who were telling me how bad things were at the home. And for three months, I went there every single day, meeting with dozens and dozens of them documenting their stories, you know, getting their, everything documented. We tried to meet with the local administration, I actually had a meeting set up in the APR room, and we had 80 residents there to listen, to talk. They canceled the meeting, and I was told that he will tell them what they are to hear. He did not want to hear the comments. I immediately got in the car, went to Lansing to see if I could set a meeting up with the Attorney General and the governor, thinking they didn't know. I was told they not only knew they were orchestrating. Long story short, we pushed, as Wendy brings, can tell you, to have a series of hearings that we testified at for weeks and months. Finally, these changes are coming about with a lot of reluctance from the state. What I'm going to say, because I'm running a little on time, I'm going to propose tonight, I have been flooded this weekend with feedback from residents, volunteers, and community about the lack of information that has reached them. Mr. Redford promised us repeatedly that there would be many public meetings across the state, because these veterans are not just from Grand Rapids, they're from across the state. I didn't know about tonight's meeting until someone called me. That's not the notice I was promised. Same thing with the residents at the home, they're not getting their mail, and they did not know. And they do want a voice in this. So what my proposal is tonight, I'm seeing no opposition to rezoning, that seems like a logical step we have to do. But I want to make it very clear, these veterans have had their voices shut and stopped too long, they need to be heard. So I'm proposing that we say okay to the rezoning, but we put some kind of hold or treat the other part of the project separately. The residents need more input before we improve anything there. Also, I want to thank all of you, because the city of Grand Rapids has been great to work with, you guys are trying really hard, but we have to do it right this time, and they have to be heard. Thank you for letting us speak, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Quiers. All right, others who wish to be heard?
Watch though, Miller, I escaped that place. You're speaking of veterans, our population in Grand Rapids should be 340,000, not pushing 200,000. How this happened, because the veterans of Walker, Wyoming, and Perris Township, Kentwood, were offended by all the secretive, behind our backs daytime meetings, such as the planning commissions, what people are doing now, daytime meetings. That's why you don't see, that's why they organize their own town instead of, instead of joining Grand Rapids, of course, Granville and Ramona Park, EGR are already organized. So, I mean, our cost for having all the secrets of meetings. Now, as a basic civil right, everybody should have his own room. Seventy years ago, it was fine to have open barracks with the guys, everyone having the same taste of music. But now, just with the invention of a TV, we need our own rooms, not a flimsy blanket with a TV blasting through, but their own, own rooms. It looks like this was engineered by the lazy union up there, they are ostensibly overstaffed up there. The, for example, you've got two guys to clean the hallway, which means at 7:00 AM when they come in, they're shouting back and forth in the hallway, working everything out. It's a worse place, one of the worst places I've ever tried to get to sleep. I escaped that place and lived in my car for about a couple more months, but I was way better off. And barely escaped it, and the only reason was because the Coit facility, the clinic was still next door, and head nurse was, I consider her a friend. And she helped me escape, and I also made my maneuver out to my car at 4:00 PM during a shift change. I was the subject of a blue code alert. I, all I did was grab a pillow, try to find a comfortable chair to fall asleep. Well, about 27 people, staffers were running around, and I heard this, everybody in the building, cops awakened by this blue code alert against this veteran. And then the next day, when I tried to escape, seven staffers from Michigan, this is Michigan New York, VA Veterans Home stalked me over to the veterans' clinic, where I met with the head nurse, Joyce. So I think you need a lot more information, since the polling, again, they cut off their own residents there. As a basic civil right, every veteran needs his own, own room, just because of TV. Every veteran has, watches a different TV. One guy wants weird sex, and next one, crazy fighting, and next one, automobiles, roaring automobiles. Our tastes are different, so it's a basic civil right, we need our own room up there, many things. Seven seconds, you're on a roll.
I know, you were on a roll, thank you, Mr. Miller. All right, others who wish to be heard on this rezoning request?
Hi, my name is Craig Newhouse, and I'm a resident of Grand Rapids. I also represent the office of Tower Pinkster as a landscape architect. I'm assisting with all of the design features for this project. To help answer some of the questions from, from Bill and from Paul, you know, we are working very closely with you guys, obviously, to try to help provide those buffers between you and the, and the neighbors nearby. And fortunately, the area where your house is, we have provided as much of a buffer as we can by shifting the road out a bit, and we're going to continue to make sure that we heavily plant up that area. I know we also just discussed just before I know we also just discussed, just before this meeting began, about how we were going to be putting in mitigation efforts to take care of a lot of the drainage that goes through their backyards, through the woodland area there. And so we're going to try to make that soil even drier as we can to help provide for good plantings that can provide screenings for them. So we definitely appreciate that. Regarding the questions for the shift changes and the vehicles moving in and out, we have discussed the option of using some signage, and also programmatically, that the facility would also look to make sure that their shift change vehicles are happening through one or more entrances that maybe will have a lesser impact on those who are right across three mile roads. So we're definitely trying to adjust those changes as we go through the design process, and we'll actually be meeting with them out on site to walk the property once it dries up a little bit from where it is right now. So anyway, just wanted to let you know that we are doing everything we can to help mitigate neighbors' concerns and make sure that this is a very fine facility. I'm extremely excited about a lot of the changes that we are looking to provide here. The amenities for these veterans are going to be really cool. We're, we're trying to take the approach of, no matter where you are in this facility, it would be a place you'd be proud to go outside. It would be a place that you feel comfortable sitting, enjoying the nature, seeing all the trees that we brought back to the site after having to clear a lot of them out, and having special places that do view into neighboring woods. So just as a quick close, thank you for a little bit of time here to say a few things, and obviously, neighbors, as you know, you know how to get ahold of me. You've got my business cards, and we can definitely talk in the future if you're having concerns that aren't being addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, others who wish to be heard on this rezoning request? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close that public comment period. And this is, just closed. All right. All right, next that will take us to our last opportunity for public comment tonight. And this is an opportunity where you are welcome to come forward and talk about anything that is on your heart and mind tonight that you want us to hear. Again, the same rules apply. We ask that you share your name, the city that you live in, and we'll give you up to three minutes to speak.
Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor and City Staff. My name is Bree McKee, and I serve as the Executive Director at Habitat for Humanity of Kent County. I just want to take this opportunity, this Plaza Roosevelt project has been a pilgrimage for Habitat, and I speak very humbly on behalf of all of the partners who have been represented in this process. We have been saying from the beginning that we are doing development differently, and we know that equitable development, that puts the voices of residents first, was really important with the Plaza Roosevelt project. So I just want to thank you all for the support in getting to this important hurdle tonight, and we have a lot more work to do. But we really want to ensure that the residents of the amazing Roosevelt Park neighborhood have an opportunity to enjoy this beautiful space. So thank you for the support. Thank you. Thank you, Bree.
All right, others wish to be heard?
I'm still Catherine Buckland.
Welcome back.
I just spoke to the young lady back there about the notification, and the home was notified. No surprise here. So I would like to recommend that this rezoning, or whatever, is postponed, and if Mr. Jones, it's in his ward, would ensure that a bus is provided, which the home owns. Bring up some veterans, so they can voice their opinion on what's going on. They have their rights, and they've been snuffed too long. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
My name again is Martha Cooper, Grand Rapids, Michigan. I came tonight to give some feedback, citizen comment. You know, I've been here for almost a year, coming on the regular, to find out about what we're going to do for the folks who are homeless, and, and I haven't been encouraged at all. I started out working with Homes for All. We became, we were very excited when you all made an Affordable Housing Committee. Unfortunately, I believe you put the wrong person in charge. As I saw that person at a meeting where Winnie Brink was, it was an Affordable Housing Seminar, telling people there, this was a meeting where nobody had any real input from citizens. He was on the panel, and he says, well, we're all going to have to be a little uncomfortable. And I just couldn't even ask you if you were going to be uncomfortable. So I'm really upset tonight. I came to the last meeting, I didn't stay, I had to talk with somebody, and I came out and I saw an article in the paper. We have been asking for you to define affordable for almost a year, and you finally did. Only, what I read in the paper was 80% of AMI is not affordable by mine. So I understand that now you're not calling it housing, affordable housing, you're calling it housing affordability. See how that works? I'll take three minutes just to let, seconds to let that sink in. See how that works? So it didn't really do anything for people who are living in motels. I came and I told you about my 71-year-old friend, and how they raised her rent to $250. I told you about Wasea, and how she couldn't find a place, and she had, she had a HUD certificate, and she was mentally ill and wasn't following through on her care. Now I came here tonight, and I want to tell you that I went to the housing, the meeting last time, and I heard that we've got people stacked up in motel rooms. Do you know where they put guys who can't live in neighborhoods because they're sex offenders? They put them in motels. How'd I find out that? Because I was homeless after they crashed the economy, and I couldn't pay anymore. All right, I sat in that damn hotel room for, for a couple months, because I didn't know what was going to happen, and I'd been sober for several years. But when that motel room got my friend, because it wasn't my time, I picked up a drink, but I called the next day so I didn't die. Then, I want to tell you that when people lose track of each other and their social supports, when they're homeless, because you don't exactly want to go around telling people you're homeless, it makes them uncomfortable. Okay? Well, I got word a couple weeks ago, that a friend of mine that I'd lost touch with about 10 years ago, when I went through it, he was on disability for depression, and he committed suicide in a motel room. We have families living there, and there's, oh, I'm out of time to tell you about human trafficking.
Thank you, Martha. All right, others wish to be heard?
My name is Joel Bartlett. I'm living in Grand Rapids in the Second Ward. I'd like to thank her for sharing her story and her opinions. I'm here about the housing now. I want to thank you guys for calling for a public hearing on the 27th of March. It is March, right? A little nervous, first time doing it. I just like to, when it comes to public inputs, I find it that it's really important that when proposing zoning changes like this, that we have public input, not only from community organizations, but from people. And I was only made aware of this zoning ordinance change last night due to the fact that one of my friends was putting on the actual meeting that I attended. And the fact that communities aren't informed about these kind of things happening, when there's, especially this particular zoning ordinance, that there is no data behind the fact that they claim that it's going to bring more affordable housing, or more money into the community, or less crime, or whatever. There, from what I understand, there's no data for it. And in fact, it's probably more likely that it's going to displace current residents, especially those of lower incomes. It's going to raise the income requirements of all of the housing market. And it's going to push out those who are lower income due to the fact that it's using affordable housing as window dressing for a cash grab when they can get it. So I would like, for when this passes, the public hearing and comes back to this commission, that we all keep that in mind, that we have residents and longtime members of our communities who should not be displaced for money that's coming into the city, making their profits and leaving. I see the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Joel. All right, others wish to be heard?
Jim Howe, City of Grand Rapids. First, I'd like to thank you all for live streaming. I know my wife is tuning in right now, so act like you agree. For the, for the zoning policies that are coming forward for the public hearing on the 27th, I know you said after your meeting, you talked about updating those to have the correct information on the website. I would ask that you also provide examples, real-life examples of situations that could happen in these neighborhoods, because it's hard to understand all the language in there. And then, for example, this morning, we talked about, well, it wouldn't even be feasible for someone to buy a house and knock it down to build a two-family, it would cost so much, they wouldn't even do it. But then, we're creating an ordinance just to do that. So why would we do that, then? So if we have real examples of what it would look like, and you can do best-case scenarios, worst-case scenarios to balance it out, but, because I know in my ward, or two, there's a church just off of Plainfield Ave that was just purchased to be redeveloped into condominiums. And because she needs a special land use, she had to have a meet, she had a meeting in which the neighborhood all came out and told her she's not building enough parking spots, which might fix your VA problem, because I hear you have more spots than needed. So maybe you can eliminate one of the parking lots to save trees. But that allowed community engagement. And now, before she goes to the neighborhood board, those neighbors are able to talk to our, our board and say, we want, we want to see this happen. By right, she wants five units in the church. The church is actually on a residential parcel. So would she be able to build four units in there by right with the new ordinance? I don't know. I'm not a zoning person. I cast Suzanne, but why would Suzanne want to respond to me? Because then I'd come up to all of our meetings and complain about the by right. So if we have real-life examples that we could go and see and say, okay, well, this is what it's going to look like, just like we have the maps when they come up, that would be helpful. But, and I also want to be clear that I don't want to discourage the other recommendations that are coming forward. A couple were put on hold under Greg because he was talking with people. Now Greg's retired, so I don't know where the rental application fee ordinance is in the progress of being approved, and the other non-zoning ordinance in the process of being approved. There's some really solid recommendations still on the table besides the ones that have to do with zoning. So I know the zoning's throwing up a big red flag for a lot of people, but we'd like to see those other ones keep making their way through the system. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Good evening, Commissioners, Madam Mayor. My name is Annette Vandenberg. I'm a resident of the Second Ward, and I'm also the Director for the West Grand Neighborhood Organization. Last night, we had our board meeting, and they drafted a letter that they wanted me to read to you tonight. It says, "Dear Honorable Mayor Bliss and City Commissioners, West Grand has a long history of working with business owners and developers. Our residents bring a wealth of information that is an asset to the development. Our residents care that our neighbors are being displaced due to various facets that impact overall market demand. Our residents know that living wages is what is needed to keep families in Grand Rapids. 26% of our families in Grand Rapids are living in poverty, as compared to the national average of 14.7%. We know that homeownership is on a decline in Grand Rapids. 54% of our homes are owner-occupied, compared to the national average of 63.9% as of 2015. Our city is a great place to live, a great place where civic engagement is honored. Neighborhood organizations have been working with the city and development for many years, as showcased tonight in our own commission meeting. Several projects have been presented that involve great community engagement, and we applaud that. However, there are other things that the residents have worked on that have shown great resident engagement, the master plan, GR Forward, Vital Streets, most recently, the Restoring of the Rapids, and Bike Feasibility Study. Within the last few years, West Grand has worked closely with dwelling place and community stakeholders on the Harrison Park housing that would be built along the Alpine Avenue. During that process, we were meeting with them, they suggested that they build some units on part of the GRPS land attached to the Harrison Park School. After listening to residents, parents, and several others, it was discovered that this particular space becomes a small pond during heavy periods of rain or snowmelt. Just last night, the board voted to support placing a billboard on the building to assist the project in being built. Great engagement and looking at our ASP has helped shape and the type of housing and projects that come into our neighborhood and that our neighbors want to see. The city commission just recently, in the last three years, has adopted our ASP, which included resident and business owner input. The Board of Directors of West Grand upholds the value of resident voice. Our residents are concerned that their voice will be eliminated in these new processes. While we are desired to support affordable housing options, we also desire that policies that impact our residents are evidence-based best practices. Before West Grand can support these proposals, we need to ensure the following. Resident voice is considered in the development process as highlighted in the upcoming Resident Neighborhood Summit on March 3rd, I believe, that those properties and their neighbors are notified in writing of these changes that are happening before being adopted, at least 30 days, but hopefully 90, to give them some time to digest what these changes are. And that a design form standard for each neighborhood is in place prior to these changes being adopted. In addition, I bring to you tonight over 100 surveys from residents that we've gathered in the last week and a half, as engaging 14 different neighborhood associations that are funded and unfunded. We all are very concerned about the lack of resident voice that is going to happen in this process if they're doubted as is.
Thank you, Annette.
May, we'll just, one second. Trying to save some time.
Yeah, why don't, you can give a copy.
I asked, I was asked if those of us that are here tonight, expressing these same things, instead of every one of us getting up, could just stand or wave their hand to you to show?
You, you are welcome to stand. If you feel similarly, don't clap, please, but you're welcome to stand if you're in support of that view. Thank you. And we'll make sure we all get a copy of this, Annette. Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard? Hi, welcome.
Paul Helen, Grand Rapids. Not to beat a dead horse, but the, the last two speakers, as they eloquently stated, are advocating for some great things. And I think with today's technology, you guys can do much better than you have been. Our planning commission can do much better than they have been. Hiding behind a 300-foot radius that is half-enforced, and many of us that fall on those lines still don't get the postcards, is weak. So I think that can be approved. I think that an earlier comment, gentleman's gone now, but he, when we were at the meeting last night, we took a look at that list for the, many of us for the first time, to see who's actually providing you input on the zoning issues. Clearly represented are, you know, big-money investors, bankers, developers. Conspicuously missing are any representatives from Wellhouse, or people heavily invested into the area for low-income housing. Possibly representatives from each of the neighborhood associations that could provide a single voice from their communities into the process. That's a, that's a huge miss on your part. So, you know, I know that I emailed in some comments today, things that struck me after the meeting last night, which was heavily attended, as, you know, tonight is. So I'm hoping that you all take this as a very strong sign that we are not opposed to all of the zoning recommendations that you're proposing, but we don't want them shoved down our throats. We want to have a voice in it. And I think you're missing out, because there's a number of areas that can be approved upon in those proposals. There's a lot of things missing that, you know, could be shored up, firmed up, improved, you know, in, in a, in a very real way by listening and utilizing the voices that are in the community. I'd like you to look at that list of people who are advising you, and, and find out who actually lives in the zones that are being affected? Or are they just business leaders and developers and investors from outside the city? Okay? Okay? The people who really have the stake here are those of us that have made the investment, who are struggling to contain and maintain the historic relevance of a lot of our neighborhoods, the residential nature of a lot of our neighborhoods. Those are the voices that you need to include. I'm not saying disclude the rest, but augment your group to have a more broad opinion.
Thank you, thank you. All right, others who wish to be heard?
Good evening, Russell Alstead, West Side, Grand Rapids. I wanted to, again, so many comments this evening, and so many comments on all of the meetings that we have, that I've been able to attend, revolve around communication and issues of community engagement. In listening to the committee, the whole meeting this morning, and the presentation on the Truscott Roseman Strategic Communication Plan, when you guys have that, or it's an email, or whatever, is that going to be public, open to the public to be able to look at as far as the strategic plan, before you get back together to discuss it? If it's not, I would like to advocate that it is, so that the community can also, you know, have input on what that strategic plan should look like. So, I think that could alleviate, help alleviate anyway, some of the issues that we're having. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you Russ. You didn't say, "Thanks for being live?" Old news.
Paul Visazki again. I'll make this very brief. We just have a few questions of people in our neighborhood with the VA project. We just don't understand that the process that people are going to go through for this thing to develop, and what the timeline may be, and will there be more discussions, more hearings? Is it basically a done deal? Could you help explain that to us?
I will look to Suzanne Schultz to help explain it. So Suzanne, do you want to, do you want to meet with some folks who are here from the, about this project? Or do you want to come up and share additional comments? It may take more of a conversation, it sounds like, there. And maybe, maybe Craig, you can join Suzanne? Okay. So maybe right after this meeting is over, if you can get with Craig and Suzanne, and they can walk through the process? Would that be helpful? Okay. All right, others who wish to be heard?
Hi, John Rothwell, Second Ward, Southeast, or Northeast side of the city. Lately, I've taken up on the journalism class to report of what's going on in the city. So I really am asking this for a friend that knew I was coming to the city tonight. They're interested in knowing what about Grand Rapids is going to do about dispensaries, now that the law has changed with zoning, and that information, if there will be dispensaries in the Grand Rapids area, and what will become of that. Some people are tired of driving to Lansing in Detroit to pick up their medical supplies, and that's what they wanted me to ask you tonight, so thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, others who wish to be heard?
What's up, Miller Beck? On the veteran situation, I'd like to say 100%. I see nothing obsolete there, okay? It's just, this is apparently a union-driven scheme to reduce their work, and a third job to prove that these buildings are, so I lived there, but even before that, I would go in there, you know, just to poke around and see how veterans are being treated. I see nothing there as obsolete. Secondly, on the bus situation there, the 13 doesn't even run, the 13 kind of loops around there. It should go under the canopy of the main VA home, and that's never been done. The 13 should be linked up with the 16, which goes to the new veterans facility, and run on Sunday. The 13, how do people get to church on Sunday up there? And the buses don't run on Saturday night, whereas your Bratty Grand Valley 50 does run, under your contracts, on the people you appoint to Rapid Board. It's running until 3:43 every Friday, Saturday morning. It's just more our abuse and veterans' abuse. The, you should hook up the 13 with the 16. 16 already runs 36 Streets, so grab the 3 out of the 13, the 6 out of 16, call 36, grab 36. It should subway under Wealthy, using Century Ellsworth. That way, you would pick up five present veterans facilities, the Michigan VA home, two on the 13 Fuller at Bradford, 836 Fuller, stop right there. And then you pick up the 311 Veterans Facility around the corner with the 13 turns on Michigan. Fourth facility, 620th Century, a marvelous facility. It's a subway street along Freeway 131, and out to Wyoming. Right now, every bus in, daytime, we got almost a half-hour delay, just getting on the 60, out to South Wyoming. Next, on the veterans' facility, as I already said, how it's obsolete, let's talk a little bit about the most outrageous boom diego of all in the city, and that is your, Madam Lanera, that's your, Laker Luna, see, $70 million, nobody needs, okay? It will replace, substitute for appropriately good Route 50, the Bratty 50, runs every five or six minutes, back and forth Monroe, up, down Pill Hill, whereas our bus routes, black and Catholic, are remained kicked out. So if you drop that, right, here's what's going to happen, this is going to be a transit divorce. Right now, we have the all stops between the local 12 and the 50 Express, we can transfer right there. It's going to kick us out almost 728 inches when you split the bus stop.
Miss, you know, your time's up. Thank you, thank you. All right, I'm going to have the woman in the purple, actually, can I have her come up next? Only she's, she's been waiting so patiently, so, and then...
Hi, Suzanne Teemstra, I live in East Town. I'm concerned about this process that we've heard about, and the housing now. And one of the things is this by rights phrase. To me, it says by developer, period. Bypassing neighborhood feedback, bypassing guidelines for architectural and aesthetic aspects of building, that have been developed by neighborhoods over many years, many hours. I'm afraid that it would endanger the historic Heritage Hill designations and regulations, and their status as historical. And I'm not imposing my aesthetic view on anybody, but buildings matter. The style of buildings matter. Neighborhoods have characters. Neighborhoods have social fabrics, and they're different from neighborhood to neighborhood. Do you have anybody advising you on what effect certain building aspects, features, have on societies? Whether it be walkability? Do they attract people who will be friendly, be infested in some way, and have some root? Be able to develop a root in a neighborhood? I think most people want roots. And if the buildings themselves get in the way of that, and if the whole aesthetic of a neighborhood becomes a hodgepodge, just because a builder wants a certain thing, we have histories to our neighborhoods, they're important, and we want futures. We don't want a bunch of blocks of apartment buildings that are half-empty in 25 years, because there's, there's nothing attractive or friendly about them. And it's not to be snooty and say, "Well, it has to look a certain way," you know? It's not that at all. It's that buildings matter. And I urge you to get, get some people in who understand about urban planning and the social aspects of the effect of buildings.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Teemstra. All right, and do you want to go next? Okay, all right.
Thank you. My name is Jessie Guerrero-Horn, I'm a Midtown resident. One thing that, I have not lived in Michigan very long. I am an Arizona native, I was born and raised there, and I only moved to Michigan about five years ago. One thing that I love about Grand Rapids is the fact that government is very receptive to their residents, no matter what it has been in the past, whether, like Annette said, river cleanup, whatever it has been, the government has been very, very attentive to the residents and the residents' voice. And I think it's become very apparent to us, especially during this meeting, that a lot of the processes that we're having right now are not comprehensive, they're rushed. We have the city manager issue. We need you guys to take more time to come up with a better plan for that, come up with better city engagement, community engagement. I think there are a lot of opportunities here for you guys to kind of reflect, and look at the things that you're doing, and maybe change some of them, but it is becoming kind of a bad habit, we kind of feel, especially among the residents, where we're coming to you saying things, and we're not being heard. And in turn of that, we're not even being attempted to engage. And so I think that is really just kind of my takeaway of all of this, is this isn't really necessarily about the housing now, or anything like that. I just really would like to implore all of you who are making these decisions for us to engage us, whether it is from the city manager, Housing Now, or whether it's just a simple zoning change. It is very, very, very obvious to me that there are some processes here that could be improved. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessie. All right, others who wish to be heard?
Good evening, Michael Scolton, Grand Rapids. I'm the board president of Garfield Park, but I'm not speaking on behalf of Garfield Park. I think there's been a lot of good comments, and we've been thinking, I've been thinking about this around the zoning thing. I've been thinking back to the Bridge, Michigan article about redlining in the '30s, and how it's still impacted on our neighborhoods today. And the tool that's been used to preserve that structure is zoning, right? So I think that we need some leadership from the commission, and maybe leadership for, you know, neighborhoods can help communicate, but keeping the zoning as-is does have an impact. And I think that the city needs to have that conversation, and I hope that Garfield Park and other neighborhoods can help be part of that conversation. I don't know how my neighbors are going to respond, I don't know how I feel about it, I don't know how these zoning changes might impact our neighborhood positive or negatively, but I do know that, you know, North of Burton has been north of Burton since the '30s, and that's wrong. So, I just want to bring that up as...
Thank you. Thank you, Michael. All right, others who wish to be heard?
Hi, my name is Leslie Van Becker, and I live in Heritage Hill, and my husband and I have moved there in the fall of 1977. We have worked very hard, we've restored five homes. We were redlined. All we wanted was $10,000 to fix up one of the derelict houses that we bought, and we couldn't get $10,000, so we had to borrow from family. We have a huge amount of our love of historic buildings, and the love of our neighbors, actually. We had a totally integrated block club, we got killed off the, not literally, but we went over to the slum landlord's house and said, "You've got to stop doing this." I think there's thousands of people like us in this city, and that's the reason the city is so good. We have invested our huge amount of time, huge amount of our own sweat equity in our homes, and we hope and implore that the City Commission and our mayor will take the time to really look at this zoning law, and really look at how it's going to affect our wonderful city. I think that this is being rushed through. I don't, from what I hear, the Neighborhood Association letters are being just done. Too bad. I think that the neighborhoods really should have a say in this. We were redlined by banks, now those same banks, because of all of our city's individual people's hard work in our neighborhoods, planting flowers, tending the parks, I could go on and on. Now, those same bankers want to make a buck off of us. And I think, as a city, we need to think, "Okay, how is this going to be in 50 years? And how is that going to affect it?" I'm looking at Michigan Avenue, those big new buildings that are coming up, there's no green space at all. I don't see any green space. And on Wealthy, there's a set of apartments with retail, they're built up right next to the, to the street. No green space. I think we've got to widen our whole outlook on our city, and its livability, and its walkability, and everything. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Matt Fein, I'm an East Town resident. I think there's a lot of people here tonight that are concerned about the proposed zoning changes, and a lot of us came here tonight thinking you were going to be discussing whether or not to have a public hearing on them. It sounds like you discussed that this morning at your session, which was maybe smart on your part, because you avoided some public scrutiny. We had a different, I guess, understanding of how the process was going to work. Some people have expressed appreciation for the fact that you're holding a hearing on March 27. I have to say personally, I'm a little disappointed, because I think, I think there's some major problems with these proposals, and I think you should have just killed them. The problem with the proposals is that three out of four strip neighbor and neighborhood input from the process, and that's not going to change. It was true four weeks ago, it's true tonight, and it's going to be true four weeks from now, when you entertain this again. You know, the problem isn't ADUs, or two-units, or four-units, or anything else, it's the fact that you're removing neighborhood voice from the process. And I just, I think that's wrong, you know? I think, as city commissioners, you have to listen to what the neighbors and neighborhoods have to say. And I think if you've heard one thing tonight, again and again, it's that process matters, and we want to have a voice. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Matt. All right, others who wish to be heard?
Hi, I'm Dwayne Deru, I'm from Midtown. I was at the last planning meeting that was addressing some of the density issues and all of that, after public comment was closed, that arbitrarily went from the 100-foot to the 500-foot by just random discussion amongst the commissioners. That turned my neighborhood nearly half-blue. By random flight of just discussion, no data, no nothing to back up whether they were discussing just opinion. So if a small group of people by just opinion can completely change the fabric of my neighborhood, and then have it codified to let developers make that very easy for themselves, that's not fair. I have lived at my house since 1991. I have put blood, sweat, and tears into my home. I got pinched by housing, just for flaking paint. I was down to my last 50 bucks to try to make it better. I have helped my neighbors, we have neighborhood. I have been hugely involved in my, on my neighborhood board. We have cohesion in our neighborhood. We don't want to lose that. I have to drive by big, boring, and ugly, and brand-new, every day when I go up and down Michigan Street, back and forth to my home. It's brand-new, and ugly, and boring. We got stuck with stuff that doesn't fit, doesn't belong, and all because planning and zoning lets it go through. And if that kind, that kind of thing can happen, even with the process we have now, the by right is going to allow all of that to happen with zero input from us. I mean, it's one thing to show up in a meeting and just get the finger to finger, and walk away, and they make their decision, but we won't even get that chance anymore after this is all through. So I would really prefer that you, that all of this just get shelved for a while, and I mean, there seems to be a desire to be like Portland or Seattle. Portland did extensive study that we learned last night, big, huge meeting that was attended. This would be the one time envy Portland for the process they went through. This is getting shoved through so fast, so unfair, so ridiculous, it makes, if I had the money, I would get out of Dodge so fast, because what's coming in my backyard, a block away from Michigan Street, is going to be some four-story monstrosity, ugly nonsense- ugly nonsense that looks like 616, and that's going to be my view probably in 10 years' time with no say no input from me at all. I've worked on my home hard. I didn't have to keep it architecturally correct from that inherited shill, but I did because I cared. I cared about where I live, so that's why I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. All right, others who wish to be heard?
Very briefly, Todd Babic, East Town, longtime resident. The process for this is the master planning process, is my understanding, that the process for civic engagement in these zoning issues. I worked with Suzanne Schultz back in 1999 through 2002 on that process diligently with what may have been originally thousands of citizens, certainly hundreds that I saw. And that is the process where I think these kind of decisions should be made and not haphazardly or opaquely or however it's been done now. Second thing, in that process, we discussed a long time about the green, the sustainable development aspects of this city. This kind of thing is heartbreaking to me to see this kind of massive destruction of tree canopy and forest. I understand we have to, you know, you're balancing urban density as opposed to moving out into other areas of destroying those. We're balancing the needs of veterans, which are clearly important, and nobody disputes that, but this is kind of heartbreaking, especially for this man. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
Hi, I'm Marion Barari Young. Worked in Baxter for many years. I listened to the meeting last night, a huge meeting where about 100 people showed up. Half of the people didn't even realize some of the things that were going on in that process. I was in another meeting where they had probably 50 people, but only one of them that was in the audience was from the neighborhood, the rest were developers. It took them an extra hour to understand the verbiage in the paperwork that they were given. So, if we, if developers that do this every day has to take an extra hour to figure out the verbiage, the languages in the, in the documents that were given everybody at these outreach meetings that people had, they couldn't even understand what was going on. It was so much thrown on you at one time. And I think it should be like the master plan, where people take their time, have a map of their community, and say what they want to see. They did it with Suzanne Schultz. When we did the master plan, 65 people were at every meeting, at least in the Baxter neighborhood alone. So, and that's a small area. People are concerned about the ramifications of what happens in their community, and they're only finding out about it at a news, maybe a PSA or a news announcement or something, or the news at night saying what has happened and what has taken place. And a lot of times, they come back on the Neighborhood Association, but we didn't have much notice either and tried to make every meeting that we could. And in saying that, I think everybody needs to step back and take a look because we don't want to just throw things on communities and wreck everything. These developers that are coming in here from out of town and throwing all the money into Grand Rapids, when it crashes, they're gone. They're going to go back home and do what they do in another state. And I don't want the neighbors to feel the ramifications of that, and we have to deal with that in our communities. A lot of people have a lot of blood, sweat, and tears in their homes, their properties, and it just makes it hard to hear some of the things that they're saying. And I wouldn't want that to happen to me. I want to be like the guy called commercial that said, the guy says, "Yeah, I want to admit, I did eat a few sheep." You know, we want to be open and honest with everything. We want to get everything out there, and we want people to feel like they're a part of the process. That's what makes sustainability, when people are part of that planning session. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, others who wish to be heard? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close that public comment period, and I will turn to my colleagues on the commission. So, I will start down here with Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank everyone for coming out this evening. I also want to make mention the fact that the question has been asked about whether or not this is the, you know, whether or not this is, this is it regarding the VA home. And I would say, I will say that I think that there's a need for greater discussion. I think that there's a need to pull together the folks, the developers, the developer of the VA home, along with neighbors and, most importantly, the residents. And so, that's the beauty of the public hearing process, is it's an opportunity for you to air your concerns, your, whether you approve it or you don't approve it, this is the, the place to, to express yourself. And so, I look forward to making sure that those things happen. Again, I will make mention the fact that I know that Suzanne Schultz, our planning director, will be available after the meeting to have some further discussions, but I think it's critically important that we get to a better place in terms of what the plans are. I know that there are questions out there. Myself and I think my colleague, Commissioner Kelly, has been CC'd as well from neighbors asking some questions. And so, I think until we have a place to where residents feel as if they have their questions answered, whether or not they're the, it's the answer that you want to receive, I think what's critically important is that you do get your questions answered.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner? Commissioner Linney?
I'd like to just thank everyone for coming out tonight. We are wrestling with some really significant issues, and so many of you have been dedicated to making your voice heard. We appreciate the email, well, I appreciate the emails, the phone calls, the public comment. Keep those coming because I think it's important for us to hear from you about what it is that you would want for our city, our community. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kelly?
Yeah, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, too, and we've gotten a lot of emails from many of you about this. What I'm hearing is that people understand the need that we are trying to address around affordable housing, but want input. So, I would encourage you to track along with us. We've been at this for about a little over three years now. So, although I know some of you feel it's rushed, I think that's because of these, these particular zoning issues. There are many other things. I know that we heard some comments about some of the other proposals that we've already passed, and we have some more coming up that are certainly not controversial. These are difficult. We're going to have to, we've changed in this city. We've, we're growing, and there are tensions around this. So, we do need you to come alongside us, both recognizing the need for the change and also to get your input, but try to stay open-minded as we work through this process and come alongside us. Thanks for coming tonight.
Commissioner?
Yes, several things. First of all, having a son, both my sons being vets, and having myself and my boys spend some time in the current veterans facility, I'm excited to see this happen, and it's long overdue, not at the expense of neighbors. I'm glad to hear that the architect is working and will continue to work with neighbors, and I'd encourage you to do that. In regard to the zoning changes, several comments. First of all, a public hearing is just that, it's a public hearing. It's where this room will be, we'll probably have to reserve a gymnasium somewhere, and I'm fine with that, to get that public input. But between now and the next five weeks, I would encourage you, if you represent a neighbor association, call Suzanne, call, call me if I'm your commissioner. I'd be happy to sit down and go over some of these. I happen to also be a developer, understand some of the ramifications of this. I know that I was approached by a board member at East Town, and I asked to come to a meeting. I wrote, I wrote a long email explaining some of this. I was never taken up on that offer, so, you know, I want, I want to be a part of that. We have to have some difficult conversations in this city. Let's talk, you ask for stats, and you ask for facts, and my colleagues know that I'm the fact and stat guy. So, the average rent in Grand Rapids for a two-bedroom apartment is $850. If you look at the average median income for African-American, Latino families, considering inflation, it's about $26,000 and $27,000 a year. You need to make $30,000 a year just to afford a 700, a 850-dollar-a-month apartment. So, that means over half the African-American, over half the Latino families living in this city cannot afford to do so. They're doubling up and they're tripling up. We have a major housing crisis. We have the lowest vacancy rate on apartments in the United States of America, lower than Seattle, lower than Portland, lower than, we're about 98% occupancy on our rental properties. When it comes to affordable homeownership, I really appreciate Mr. Scolton's comments. I live north of Burton, you know where I live. I live on the corner of Madison Hall, I've lived in the neighborhood for 20 years. So, the day I moved into my place, there was not a human being that lived in my block, so I've seen my neighborhood change, and I know what that's like. But I also know my neighborhood's been the neighborhood where if you were poor and you needed a rental property, you need homeownership, you were living in my neighborhood. So, concentrated poverty has really kept people in that state. So, we cannot let zoning become the new red line, which I'm afraid of. For homeownership, you know, if you look at the average salary of a worker, of a family living in Grand Rapids, they can afford between $159,000 and $189,000 a house, okay? Right now, today, I just checked, there's only eight homes in the entire city of Grand Rapids for sale in that price range. There's only 30 in the whole county. So, the uncomfortable conversation we need to have is I respect and, and understand the concern and the fear and all that kind of stuff, but we can't, and I'm not hearing that from anybody, but I'm hearing, "I want my neighborhood to stay the same, but I do support affordable housing." Well, we have to find a way to find that balance, and what does that look like? And I agree with you, that's a neighborhood-by-neighborhood conversation that we need to have. But, you know, so I'm prepared to have those conversations with people individually or with organizations, but we need to have those conversations. And who knows, March 27th may just be a starting point for a whole nother series of conversations. I don't know. That doesn't mean that it's going to be, have the public hearing on the 27th that we're going to vote on it that night. Nothing's being pushed through. So, I appreciate you all for coming out tonight, but we all in Grand Rapids need, need to be prepared for some difficult conversations.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner, all right?
Yeah, I also do want to thank you all for coming out and grateful to, to hear people standing in solidarity with people who's suffering, but also, you know, speaking out for their neighborhoods. So, we've got five weeks until public, public hearing, and then we've got time to make a decision after that. So, I just encourage you to keep on reading the information that we put out. I have full confidence that Eric and the staff will get the updates on the Housing Now website so that you can look at the actual information and be reacting to the actual data that we requested this morning at committee of the hall. So, review that data, continue to hold meetings so that we can circle up around it, and then eventually, we've got to make some decisions. But we've got, we've got at least, I don't know, eight, nine weeks before we have to come to that decision point. So, let's stay at the table together and grateful again for everybody coming out tonight.
All right, interim city manager?
No, thank you, Mayor.
All right, city attorney? All right, interim city clerk? All right, and with that, I'll just add my thanks to all of you and appreciate all you do in our community and your love you have for your neighborhoods and our city. Thanks.